Prescott City Council meeting to order for Wednesday, January fourth at five thirty. Welcome, everybody. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is the first meeting of the two thousand twenty-three calendar year, so we have a few things to take care of, some informational things and organizational things, I should say. So one of the first ones is to administer the oath of office to our newly elected city councilor. So would Doug Seer and Jeff Willett please stand? And Kim, our city clerk, will do the pledge of belief of the oath of office. My mom's calling from Georgia.
Just keep following the oath. You guys can say it together.
Starting now.
Sure.
I do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Maine so long as I shall continue a citizen thereof, so long as we go on. I do swear that I will faithfully discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as city councilor for the city of Prescott according to the Constitution and laws of the state of Maine so long we go on.
Now, is that the new constitution? Well, welcome aboard. Kevin, happy to see the experience and the level of commitment you guys have displayed. And I think the voters of Prescott chose wisely, so looking forward to working with you again in the future. Next item is to appoint or to vote on the council chair for two thousand twenty-three. And we'll start with nominations from the floor. Would anybody like to nominate? Anybody?
I'd give Jake a nomination. I think he's stepped up really great at the few meetings I use run. And I think this is his last year on this term. I'd love to see him kind of step up in the leadership position.
Is there a second? Well, I'll say it. Yep, Jeff, okay. Mike nominated Jake instead of by... Jeff, is there any other nominations from the floor?
I'll nominate our current chairman, Kevin.
Okay. Then nominated by Craig. Is there a second? Gary is the second. Is there any other nominations for council chair for two thousand twenty-three? No? So seeing none, we'll do a ballot and stuff. We'll ask him to hand out papers and stuff when we'll do a ballot. And the first one in the majority is the winner. Second, do a ballot? What's that?
Oh, no, you both. Yeah, you both. Everybody vote.
We got a fancy thing, official balance. If they have a name and address and...
So we'll give the city clerk a moment to calibrate, tabulate the ballots. And then we'll read the result.
Okay, three for Kevin and four for Jake.
There you go, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
That was a close one. All right, well, then I'll pick up right where Kevin left off. And we have a few more appointments to make. A few more appointments to make for tonight. Next up would be the deputy council chair, which is now a vacant position. So would anyone who'd like to nominate a councilor? What's that?
For you.
Oh, you want to nominate? Yeah, you can if you want to.
All right, so we have Kevin's name before and second. Do we have another name coming up? Okay, then Kevin's been nominated for deputy chair and we'll take the vote. So all those in favor? Opposed? Seven zero. Thank you. Okay, moving on with the other appointments. So when I was looking through these, it didn't look like there were too many vacant positions. Martin, did we want to discuss any of these individually or?
No, I can just run down the list if you'd like.
Yeah, please.
For Arustic Waste Solutions, it's Hasben and Kevin Freeman. That is an annual appointment. That all the board members that represents a different towns, it's just a one-year appointment. So that needs to be reapproved. Audit committee is currently Kevin and Jake. Finance committee, these two counselors are the ones that responsible for signing the weekly warrants. Policy and ordinances in the later on the packet. Currently, it's Craig and Kevin. Prescott Development Fund Board of Trustees, there's two. It's currently Kevin and Jeff. Downtown Revitalization Committee, this is one. It doesn't dictate that there needs to be two. It needs to be council representation, but currently the two counselors to that are Jake and Mike if they wish to continue. Downtown TIP Advisory Committee, it does require two counselors. It's Jake and Craig. And there's no openings for the Industrial Council. The way that that's set up, that's filled by Kevin and Mike. And those are until the end of their terms or for four years, whichever comes sooner.
If somebody wants to be on Downtown Revitalization Committee, I just struggle to make those meetings. But if not, I'll remain.
When are we? Years for the downtown committee?
Uh, four, four-thirty in the afternoon. I understand that, right?
What's the second one, say?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. I would advise that we accept the slate of nominees as presented, with the exception of the Downtown Revitalization Committee substituting Craig Green for Mike Chassie.
All right, so we have a motion by Kevin. Do we have second? Seconded by Gary. All those in... All right, any further discussion?
All in favor?
Opposed? Seven zero. Thank you. All right, moving on, we have to agenda item three. We have the two thousand twenty-three appointment of municipal officials, boards of committees, and ex officio. So these are positions that are filled by either department heads or citizens at large. Martin, is there any positions we need to discuss tonight other than what's been presented in our binder?
No, I'm happy to report, counsel, that we have almost a full... If council approves this list, then we only have one vacancy right now on the boards and committees. So everyone else have agreed to continue on. So very happy that we don't have people that are... People that have termed out have agreed to return to those boards and committees. So right now, if we approve this, keep the boards operating as is. Very happy that people are deciding to continue on in their role. So it's nice to have not many vacant positions.
And it looks like the only one is for the audit committee, that?
Yes.
And is that just a citizen at large?
Citizens at large, the only requirement is that they're Prescott resident for that committee. And that, for anyone that's listening out there, it's only... They meet typically only twice a year. Once with the auditor prior to the audit and once after the audit's completed. So there's not much of a time requirement that's needed for that. So it's not like a regular standing committee. It's meeting as needed and typically that's done sometime in the March. And then when the audit's complete, October, November typically is when it's done.
Awesome. So just for anyone who is interested, Martin just said it's not a board that meets very often. We need to get a peek into the financials behind the city. And it was an interesting meeting we had this year and I definitely encourage you to sit in on it if you're interested in it.
So that's the audit committee? Yes. So there's currently two counselors are on it. So the other requirement is we... So represented by council just needs to be a person at large. And for us, that means someone eighteen and a resident.
But there isn't anybody right now that's leaving. There's no one.
There's no one. No, it's just two counselors currently.
Oh, okay. I just didn't see something on the...
Yeah, ex official members are myself and the finance director. So this would be the fifth person on that committee.
So it looks like we need a motion to approve all the appointments as presented.
Mr. Chairman, we approve the appointments and reappointments as presented in detached sheet for city charter, board and committee, and ex officio appointments.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mike and seconded by Kevin. Any further discussion?
The Zone Board of Appeal says that Earl Twigs is on there until twenty-third one.
Does that happen to be an eight-year appointment, Martin, or is that?
Oh, no, that's a type on. That should be twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, so we can just amend the motion other than to amend that the Zone Board of Appeals, Earl Twigs, seat will last until December twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-six?
Twenty-five, excuse me.
Twenty-five?
Yep.
You guys okay with that motion?
Yep.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Six zero. All right, the last item we have before you break for a quick recess is the city council meeting dates and times for two thousand twenty-three. We typically meet on the first Wednesday of every month. And so if we continue that, if they don't land on the Wednesday, if it's a holiday, then the meeting will be postponed until the following Wednesday. Martin, did you have any amendments to that?
No, I'd like annually just to check in with council, make sure that Wednesday works, doesn't conflict with other meetings or with work. It's flexible. It doesn't say in the charter. It doesn't dictate when we have to meet. It's up to the council annually to make a change if they so desire.
Does anyone have any suggestions to change the schedule?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we keep the same schedule as before.
All right, so we have a motion by Kevin.
Second.
And seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Six zero. Okay, after all those appointments, we do an annual industrial city council meeting, the first meeting of every year. So at this point, the city council is going to break for a recess and the Industrial Council will have their annual membership meeting. Do we have a motion to break?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we suspend the rules and ask for the Prescott Industrial Council to hold their annual meeting.
Motion by Kevin. Do we have second? Second by Doug. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven zero. So we are out and at a leak recess at five fifty. And we meet again when the Industrial Council membership meeting is over.
So council, there is a... There are the notes. It's after the tab number four in your binders. That kind of gives us a... We've did an excellent job lining up what the steps are. I know sometimes it can be a little confusing that now we switch hats and we are... Now it's a membership annual meeting. So the motions are included. And the only part that sometimes we have a hiccup, she did a very good job, is when we elect the directors. This year, it could be Scott Norton. The people that can make that motion are current directors. Mike Chassie, Margot Dyer, Kevin Freeman, and Eric Smith are the four individuals that can make that motion for Scott Norton when we get to that call. So she did make a note, put it in blue ink to make sure that we do that correctly. So I guess at this point, we could call the membership meeting to order. That's you.
Okay, then I'll call the annual Industrial Council annual membership meeting to order. We want to start with...
The acceptance of minutes from two thousand twenty-two. It's kind of... So this membership meeting only meets once a year, so it's just the meeting minutes from last year for you to review. And the majority of this report is what Tom gave for report last year. So it's kind of interesting to look at these notes. When you hear Tom speak in a moment, you can compare that with all the things that we've done in the past year. It's pretty impressive. So after you've reviewed, you can make a motion to accept?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to accept the Prescott Industrial Council membership annual meeting minutes of January fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
We have a motion from Kevin. Is there a second to accept the minutes? Second from Doug. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seven zero. Okay, so we're moving on to number three, which is the election of directors. Martin, would you like to start with this?
So Scott Norton is currently the chair of the Prescott Industrial Council. And he not only agreed to continue on as a member of the Industrial Council, but also the president. So at this point, he's the only person that's being nominated by the other directors. So I ask for a motion for one of the four people.
Yeah, Scott does a good job. I nominate Scott Norton for a three-year term as a director at large on the Prescott Industrial Council and second.
We have a motion by Mike and a second by Kevin. Any further discussion or other nominations? All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Seven zero. And next up, we are moving to our annual report. This is a brief annual report of the activities of the previous year. Executive Director, Tom Powers. Welcome to the podium, Mr. Powers.
Thank you very much, council. I did make copies of this for you folks to distribute amongst yourselves. If you'd like to have... Because there's back and figures involved of this that you may want to reference at a later time. So as stated earlier, this is our annual meeting and I would do a review for this past year, two thousand twenty-two. I'll start out by saying I'd like to say thank you on behalf of myself and the Industrial Council Board of Directors. I'd like to say thank you to the city manager and to you, city council members, for your support regarding all the projects and negotiations that we've done in the past. The Prescott Industrial Council, as you know, is a corporation. It's governed by seven boards of directors. Two of them are made up from folks on your council. Two of them are by the Chamber of Commerce and three are at large. And we've been fortunate enough to have a very hard-working group that do it as a volunteer basis. And we're very fortunate to have them. We employ four-year-round staff and we bring on one additional summer employee. These people oversee the maintenance and development of the city's buildings and grounds. The city's assets on the park have an estimated value of over forty-seven million dollars. And we maintain about four hundred acres of maintained park area within the industrial area itself. You'll see by the accounting breakdown, which I... Reason I gave to you earlier is our operating expenses for two thousand twenty-two stayed within budget, which was four hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. The debt service was three hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Our rental income was eight hundred and five thousand dollars, four hundred and thirty-eight. One of the particular notes I'd like to have you note is when you do eight hundred thousand dollars worth of business and only have seven hundred and fifty dollars worth of accounts receivable at the end of the year, you have quite a business. So accolades are to be given to everybody involved with that. That's good accounting right there. And as always, we return a positive... Return to the city. In this case, it was twenty-six thousand, forty-seven dollars. That's after all the improvements in capital expenditures that were done to maintain and upgrade the park. So that's still pretty admirable as it is. Our rental income from the railroad system, we generated fifty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, which is about eleven thousand dollars more than last year. And we've seen that revenue increase about that same amount every year for the past four years. We place those funds directly in our railroad reserve account and that covers things like maintenance and insurance and all the other things it takes to keep our six miles of railroad going. The park's operation is a hundred percent self-sustainable. We return money and access of what we're allocated every year, even after all the construction that's done on the park. Debt is factored in. That's something new in the past couple of years that we've started doing. So it's a true representation of how much it costs and how much we're returning. And there's no burden to the city for these operations. Projects in twenty-two, we're definitely impacted by limited labor force and price stability and material shortages. But here's a quick list of some of the larger projects that we were able to work on this year. We did painting on the exterior of the Surewinter Foods building. It's a building we acquired last year from NMCC. We finalized the paperwork and did a groundbreaking for solar sites one and two on the north and south end of the park. Hopefully, we will start this spring on those two sites. Designed and received approval for a new subdivision, which we call the Cross Street subdivision, located between Cross Street and Skyway Street. That'll be our fourth subdivision up on the park. And hopefully, we're getting near an end. Completion of the lease hold improvements. This was a pretty big project. It's in connection with the Spudnik Equipment Company. They are now occupying the former Coca-Cola building, which we call Building four oh three. We were able to finish that project ahead of schedule and under budget. And they are now moved in as of January first to that location. One of the things I would bring up is that has increased the size of their operation by five times. So a pretty substantial move and a very big commitment on their part to Arustic County for a long-term commitment. We completed construction of building twelve oh five, which we called the Spec Building last year. It's an eleven thousand, four hundred square foot building on Skyway Street. It was constructed on time, on schedule, same thing, and on budget. With that, we also completed the long-term negotiations with Coca-Cola. With that, we also completed the long-term negotiations with Coca-Cola for the lease of that building, so we now not only have built the building, we have it leased before the project was completed with a ten-year lease for them. Uh, negotiated and completed the sale of one point nine acres to DASCO, which is one of the park's tenants and, uh, they're going to use that expansion, uh, they're going to use that property for, for future expansion. We applied and received a state of Maine IRAP grant, which is a railroad grant, which will help us develop an, an additional seventeen hundred square foot spur system, which will be going into what was formerly known as the intermodal yard, that'll add up, that, that gets us close to six miles worth of rail system on the park. Uh, we've negotiated and completed the sale of two additional land parcels, uh, six point nine seven acres to a Rusik Trust for the development of a new equipment maintenance building and for the product and storage area for their trusses and materials that go into making their trusses, this has helped their company expand as well, I think it's been a good addition for everybody. Designed and started a second spec building, cloned to the first one, another eleven thousand square foot building, it's located directly behind the other one on our new West Drive, uh, it is truly designed as a spec building and will be finished on the exterior and insulated, but will not have the interior finished, we expect a completion of that phase one by May of this year. Uh, our seasonal storage account was ninety-six thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty cents, that was all done with just one building, the only remaining building we have for such purposes, the old former IP building, we have approximately a hundred and thirty different tenants storing over two hundred and fifty pieces in that one building. Before, we had numerous buildings that we stored throughout, we were able to make a little more income, but now those buildings are making better income by being long-term leased to single tenants, the way they're designed to work. Twenty twenty-two's estimate for the industrial park, we feel that we're still a home for between eight and nine hundred jobs, last dozen include the residents and students that travel and live within the area and the infrastructure of the park, the park contains over fifty-eight businesses, industries and organizations, the park's strategic location in Prescott and Arustic County, its available acreage, its numerous businesses, infrastructure, and importantly, the city's growth ideal, ideology have truly positioned the Skyway Industrial Park for a brighter future. In closing, I'd like to say that the common goal of improving life in Arustic County is apparent in the actions of the people who make up and serve on these councils and I believe that both the city and the industrial council members deserve recognition for their efforts, support, guidance and trust. Respectfully submitted, Executive Director Tom Powers. Any questions?
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Approximately, or how many employees are on the industrial council payroll?
Four with one part-time summer person.
Yes. And I was taking a guess, I couldn't remember if it was four or five, then closest city close to us in size is Bangor, that has an industrial council, development council basically like us, they have like sixteen employees and we're doing it with four extremely dedicated individuals and I want to make that a part of Tom's comments tonight, they do an awful lot of good things for the city.
They do.
And I, for one, being on the industrial council board for the last several years, it's been a, a, a great experience and, uh, looking forward to where we go in the future and Tom, you and Ruth do a fantastic job leading that group of four people, two of, one switches gears. So on behalf of the Prescott City Council, I'd like to say thank you and congratulations and we're really looking forward to the future.
Thank you and thank you for your support again, folks, can't be done without you.
Mister Green, I, I'd like to second that and also, uh, I, I'm, I'm absolutely in awe of seven hundred and fifty dollars, so I-
Account receivable, I was too.
I think you can now add to her, in the middle of her name put Ruth the Hammer, because obviously she must threaten-
You probably wouldn't get a lot of negative feedback on that either. Any belt, anybody else has any other further questions? That, that concludes our report for the year.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Come back again, okay?
The council annual meeting is adjourned.
Mister Chairman, I move to adjourn the meeting at six oh two AM.
Oh, uh, yeah, uh, we need a motion to accept the annual report as presented.
So moved.
Uh, moved by Mike.
Second.
Second by Craig, all those in favor? Opposed, and it's seven zero. All right, and we also have a motion, uh, for adjournment by Kevin, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Doug, uh, any more comments on the industrial council annual meeting? All right, all those in favor? Opposed, and it's seven zero. All right, moving right along, uh, we're going to re-continue the city council meeting, uh, six oh two, and we will move right into our public hearings. And the first on that list is item number five, to, uh, repass subordinances due to sunset provision, we have the chapter fifty-three dispersment warrant, chapter fifty-four all-terrain vehicle, and the chapter sixty property assessed, clean energy, pace and public hearing notice. Uh, Martin, would you like to start with this one?
Oh, certainly, so council, uh, every four years, uh, there's a schedule of ordinances that, that do, do have an end date, each ordinance that's passed by council, per charter, it only lasts for four years and then council has the opportunity to either take action upon it or else it, or else it sunsets, uh, so this year, there's, there's three that we're looking at, the dispersment warrant and just to remind council, uh, that one, uh, is for payments to do weekly payroll and to make payments to the school, so what we have is the two counselors, uh, Kevin and, uh, Craig, that come in each week to, to sign the warrants so we can make payroll and, uh, school payments, so that's been a longstanding policy that's allowed by state statute, no changes to that ordinance. The ATV, uh, there's just a slight change and it includes what we've done for the ATV snowmobile trail that's through the industrial park that avoids all the contention we had going down Parson Street, so we did change the language in that, um, there's no need to go on Parson Street, we have that, uh, except for, um, of course, the gas that's across the street, so, um, upon, upon review, that part was, was amended. And the PACE is something that came about in two thousand nine from the Maine State Legislature, uh, businesses and individuals can apply for energy upgrades to their, to their properties that they own and so this allows, without having this ordinance, no one could use these, these funds, so there are some, uh, updates that we need to do to, to the PACE ordinance in the future, uh, Galen has been in contact with, with the state to s- make sure that, um, this continues to be available, hasn't been utilized because of the interest rates that have been out, available in the private sector, but of course now that's, that, that's scheduled to, to change, so this may be an avenue for businesses and individuals to take advantage of. So that's, that's those three ordinances in a nutshell, really, really quickly, so only one change, um, to the, uh, altering vehicle ordinance.
All right, uh, thank you for that, so this is a public hearing, so at this point, um, we'll take anyone, if anyone's here to, uh, address these ordinances, please, if you're free, come on up. Did we get any written comments? Uh, seeing none, uh, we will close the public hearing and ask for any comments from city council on these ordinances.
I move we repass these ordinances with the noted changes.
Uh, so we have a motion from Craig, uh, to repass the ordinances, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, so moved by Craig, second by Kevin, any further discussion on the ordinances? All those in favor? All opposed, seven zero. So, uh, moving on to the next public hearing for tonight, we have the approval to adopt the chapter sixty-three lodging establishment license ordinance and this is the ordinance that, uh, was, uh, worked together to, uh, address some challenges and changes that the city is making to, um, certain lodging establishments within the city and Martin, would you like to start with this one?
Definitely, you did a good job covering it, we, uh, the planning board has really, uh, taken a lot of time to take public comment and work with stakeholders, I, I believe this is a good policy, it's thanks to involve the stakeholders and continuous meetings and so, uh, originally there was some opposition to this ordinance and through revisions that we've made, we've gotten the support of the stakeholders, so I think this is some good, good crafted policy, uh, I'd ask Galen to step forward and, and kind of go over some of the, some of the things I know we've, we've talked about in the past, I, I think council's pretty, uh, understands these things, but it'd be good just for the public to hear about the ordinance right now that we're proposing to adopt.
Good evening, gentlemen, happy new year. Um, yes, so I'll go through the, uh, different changes that we've experienced, uh, just by way of background, the city council was part of the joint hearing with the planning board where we did get, uh, a lot of feedback from the community and industry and so I'll go over some of the changes, uh, with this ordinance in particular, um, we added a better definition for hotel as well as unresolved incidents, so an unresolved incidence is when, um, the police department gets called to, to a lodging establishment and they are not, uh, comfortable with the changes that were made, so either the person wasn't removed from the, the property or there's outstanding code violations that aren't being addressed or there's not been a plan submitted, so we, we put a better definition per the hospitality, uh, industries of recommendation, so what this ordinance would essentially do is, uh, it would require all lodging establishments, which would be grooming houses, hotels, motels, to register with the city with a license and then they will be inspected by the code officer on an annual basis for compliance, similar to what we do for a lot of other business-type licenses for the city. Basically, it would be an automatic renewal as long as they're in compliance with the ordinance, which says you can't have more than two unresolved incidents that are in that calendar year, you, as the council, are the licensing board, so you will be looking over the applications and then approving them, uh, sometime in April, so that's the, the intent, we're going to give some time for the establishments to submit their applications so we have one public hearing and you can issue it at that point in time. I think that's, and we do require, I, I think it's just important to notice that, uh, the other satisfactory requirement is that they're up to date on their property taxes, so again, we're trying to really make sure that, um, our business community is outstanding members of our community, which they are, and we're just trying to keep that standard in there for all the taxpayers, so that's it.
Do we have a proposed start date, uh, on one of this year or?
No, so we'll start, once you approve this, we'll send letters out just to let them know, hey, this has been enacted, um, we'll have the application form ready for them to go, it's already actually drafted, um, by the, uh, code staff, so then they would be submitting those for your April meeting. Cause that's when the license date, uh, it's for, up for renewal, so they're all at the same time. Yep, you'll see it in April.
So it'll be in place before the summer season?
Correct.
I'm thinking you guys have ten hours of meetings in this thing.
Yeah, with the planning board, yep, and then just hearing, talking to the industry as well and hearing their comments and they offered their amendments, so that, we did something a little bit unconventional, um, which I think is a, a pretty good proactive, it's a proactive tool that the city probably hasn't done in the past, the planning board solicited feedback in their public advertisement where they can submit amendments, so we allowed members of the public or industry in this case to submit amendments and that's what they, they had a certain deadline and then it went and got reviewed by the planning board and that seemed to be a lot smoother process of filtering, uh, policymaking, uh, for the city, so we're going to try to do that in the future with some other things that could-
So I think you've got a lot of buy-in basically of the people that are directly affected by the ordinance.
Yep, and they actually, uh, uh, two of the hospitality, uh, groups were at the public hearing with those proposed changes and they came out in support, so.
Is there a natural fee?
That would be established by the council, so whenever you do your fee schedule, so right now there would be no fee, it's whenever you, I think it's in October, is it, or I forget when they do the-
Yeah, I plan on the next meeting taking out, there are some other revisions too, so I anticipate next, knowing this is going to start in April, for the February meeting, we review these, uh, what my recommendation would set it in similar for the other, we, we do liquor fees or other business fees, have that in line similarly, um, we'd want to make sure we cover our, uh, we have post-notice in the paper, so that'd be something I'd like to see at least cover, cover our costs, so it's not occurring in the debt to the taxpayer check, administrative service policy.
Any more council questions? All right, thank you very much, Galen, appreciate it.
Owner, just for one comment, just in case the public is wondering why we did this, that, that the impetus behind this was because of the difficulties that were encountered with the rental program that was administered from the federal government and the community and with some of the hotels here, uh, that experienced unruly behavior and, and different issues that, uh, that caused a great deal of, of strife and overtime for the police department and EMS, uh, we're hoping that future disturbances of that sort, uh, will be covered under this and through the good work of the committee and different partners that, um, if establishments don't, uh, adhere to, uh, reasonable, uh, regulations to keep things within check, then we've got some ability now to take action and to, to force them to do those reasonable actions, uh, so that we don't have that kind of issue in our community again, so.
I think every counselor, counselor has received feedback from the community as well as the planning board has received feedback from the community about the circumvention of local zoning and it was a little bit of a, a frustration with, um, some of the, uh, some of the establishments didn't want to curb their behavior and I will, I'll say that once we started drafting this, the behavior was changed, so it's, it's achieved what it's intended to do.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Another additional comment, just to read into the public record, that the representatives of the Prescott Land, which was the, the, the largest, um, issue that we had, you know, with the ERA program, because they had the most, over a hundred people at one point this summer, um, were, uh, directly represented in this meeting process and they wholeheartedly endorsed and supported this, along with the Hampton Inn, uh, so I just wanted to make sure that that was in the record. Thank you.
Excellent. Um, all right, any, uh, comments from the public on this ordinance? Were there any written comments received? All right, uh, so seeing no comments, we will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Mister Chairman, I move that we adopt the first chapter sixty-three lodging establishment license ordinance as submitted.
That's moved by Jeff. And second by Doug, uh, any further discussion on the ordinance? All right, all those in favor? Opposed, and then it's seven zero. All right, the next, um, agenda item we have tonight is citizen comments and as always, this is, um, any citizens a chance to address the city council directly, uh, we also take feedback electronically, if you're not one for public speaking, uh, do we have any comments tonight from anyone attending? Did we get any online comments? And i- if you do want us to make comments electronically, um, you know, you can take them to any city council or I'm sure they'd be willing to bring comments to us, uh, they can email the city at-
Kvenmore.
Kvenmore.
Prescott ME dot US.
Prescott ME. Prescott ME.
Dot US.
Dot US, all right, uh, so we do take comments electronically, um, if you do want your voice to be heard at one of the city council meetings, um, or you can come again, that's, we can do that the first every Wednesday of the month, uh, unless it's a holiday and it'll be the following Wednesday. With no citizen's comments, we'll close this comment period and move on to the consent agenda. Uh, for the consent agenda tonight, uh, that'll be items seven through eleven, we have approval of the minutes from December seventh, two thousand twenty-two and December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two meetings, uh, agenda eight is approved, two thousand twenty-two warrants, number forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven and forty-eight totaling one million, six hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred forty-two dollars and eleven cents, number nine is approved reapportments of Carol Pearson, Greg Roderick and Noel Purrier to the Prescott Utilities District Board of Trustees, we have number ten, which is approved policy on treasurer's dispersment warrants for employee wage and benefits, number eleven, approved municipal officers' policy on dispersment of municipal education costs. Uh, Martin, are we set to take these as one item or do we need to break some up to discuss?
Um, the, I think we can do it all as one, just happy that, uh, the reapportments for the, the utility board district, that they're willing to, to serve again, so I'll make a poll board for that.
And do we have any, uh, is the council, would the council like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as one item or would anyone like to break out?
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion by Craig and a second by Kevin, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, and that is seven zero. Okay, moving on to old business, uh, doesn't look like we have any today, so we'll move to new business, which is item number twelve, schedule a public hearing to amend chapter nine license- Doesn't look like we have any today, so we'll move to new business, which is item number twelve, schedule a public hearing to amend chapter nine license and public hearing fees ordinance. Martin, could you start us off with this, please?
So council, these are directly tied to the topic that we had just a moment ago, is to take a look at the fees again. The public hearings is one thing that was, talking with the town clerk realized that it's been since twenty sixteen since we reviewed these for public licenses. So we did find some inequities between business licensing fees. Along the way, we have adjusted some for businesses to make sure that we cover the cost to put these notices in the paper. Unfortunately, advertising costs have increased greatly, but we still have some that are not, that are not similar. So it'd be nice to take a look at all the fees, including the one we just enacted, for how we want to set that level. So including that is, we should look at some fees for the different departments too, airport, fire department. There has been some things that since twenty sixteen with EMS rates, they have increased. We hold other EMS providers to see what they've been charging for a lot of insurance rates, like asking for certain reports. We need to take a look at all those, all those rates. So it'd be a comprehensive look at all these different fees that we charge as a city. Put them all in one, at one time, instead of looking at it individually.
Excellent. So if you have an interest in the chapter nine license and public hearing fees ordinance, you'll be able to come to the February twenty twenty-three council meeting and say your piece. Are there any discussions on, from the council on this ordinance? Or do we have a motion to schedule a public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we schedule a public hearing for the next city council meeting on February first, twenty twenty-three, to update the current rates of these.
Motion by Kevin?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Seven zero. Next, we need to schedule a public hearing to amend chapter forty-eight general assistance ordinance. Martin, what is this ordinance comprised of?
So council, if you remember, back in November, we did update the G A maxims. The state sent another memo, and they have, due to some housing issues that was had, they did another survey for what the amount should be for housing, and also inflation, so they did slight adjustments to the G A's, to the GeoMaxims. So we need to either follow suit with the state for consideration, or decide to basically keep the, keep the previous ones.
Okay. And what are the, what is the general assistance account that we use for?
So this is for various things, the most prevalent one is for housing, for when people that are under poverty guidelines, they do come in for town assistance for housing, for food, for prescription, and even another category is burials. When they prove to the clerk that they make below income threshold, that's when G A will, we issue a payment for those services, and we get reimbursed the majority back from the state. So it's a state mandated program, so they're telling us we need to once again adjust those rates and have another public hearing.
Excellent. All right, so is it whatever I mentioned, make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the general assistance ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, I move to schedule a public hearing for the February council meeting, February one, to adopt and amend the chapter forty-eight general assistance ordinance.
Given a motion by Jeff.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any further council discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seven zero. And our last item on new business today is for tax-acquired properties. There's quite a list today. Martin, would you like to start us off by talking about these properties?
Sure, and the inside, you'll see a memo from Brad, and unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight. He's, his son is playing in the R C D game. He's a Prescott Wildcat going up against the Caribou Vikings, so I can understand the absence for him to watch, watch the game and be part of it.
Go Wildcats.
Go Wildcats. So a list of five properties. So at the, at previous council meeting, we did elect to not do an automatic foreclosure for non-payment taxes or special assessments. So these five properties are the ones that we did automatically foreclose upon. So the list of five, seventy-three Chapman, seventy-four Exchange Street, ten Delmont, twenty-five Turner, and fifty-one State Street. You can see some of these, there's additional notes. On seventy-three Chapman, we did have a special assessment and property tax payments that were not paid. It is a substantial tax bill that remained that way. So number, property number one, what the recommendation is, we retain that property. Being on Chapman, there is interest to use that for the recreational abatement. We've talked about that in years prior. Seventy-four Exchange, ten Delmont, and Turner Street. We retain those properties and more, I think the best thing we do is what we've done in the past, is list that with the, with a realtor, with the city. Fifty-one State Street, we did talk about it at the last meeting. They are looking to repurchase the property, paying all the back taxes, paying all associated costs that we have with relisting lien fees, an administrative fee, that would be a fee that we charge to make sure it's covering all the time associated with this, in all interest. So it's paying all back taxes. This one, they did have, little background is that this is, unfortunately, the landowner died. The matter went to probate court, and it's been taking a while to get that through probate. So it was an ownership title issue. We're doing all we can to try to work with the property owners that do wish to retain it, they do want to purchase the property. So that's the only one, the fifty-one State Street, that occasionally we do get these, these issues, try to work with the property owners. So the motion is to retain, retain property one, properties two through four listed with a realtor, and property number five, having the council authorize us to use the policy for tax-acquired properties.
Thank you. So as Martin just said, we've got five properties here, and it's like we're keeping seventy, we retain seventy-three Chapman. We're going to list properties two through four, which is seventy-four Exchange, ten Delmont, and-
Fifty-one.
Twenty-five Turner, and fifty-one State. Do we have a motion from the council?
So moved.
Moved by Craig, do we have a second? Any further council discussion on these properties? All right, all those in favor? All opposed? And that is seven zero. All right, the last thing we have tonight is the manager's report. So go ahead and take it away.
So council, I know people are itching for things to do now that the typical winter activities are not available due to the rain. So the forum does have public skate, and there's some other fun activities at the rec center. They're looking to start a rugby club, and also, if we get some snow, ski club is going to be starting up too. So that's all listed on the rec center's website to register. You can get more information on Facebook too. The library is hosting a family's playgroup. They read a book, and they also have some activities, so that's going to be ongoing. And tomorrow night at six P M, author Mary Bill, she wrote a book about her aviation journey. She's a pilot. She'll be at the Griffiths House tomorrow at six P M. So there's, there's a lot of activities that we're trying to do, and things will be coming up, so please take a look on Facebook. They host those events for family activities to keep everyone busy and engaged. And for next meeting, we will be talking about the rates, of course. The volunteer fire department is happy to announce that we're going to hold the state main muster in Prescott. So there'll be an influx of departments and activities, so that will be a nice shining star for Prescott, fill up the hotels. Happy to host that, so Aaron Buzz is going to be coming to talk to us about that. Hopefully, get some community buying and get some businesses that help.
Do you want the date or-
I don't remember the date, yeah. But I believe it's in, I thought it was in July is what Aaron said it was going to be. So we have time to plan and kind of roll out the right carpet for all the visitors. And also, bring your calendars next month. We're going to try and schedule a date for a goal setting to kick off twenty twenty-three goals. So that's what I have for manager's report.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any miscellaneous items the council wanted to bring up before we close the next meeting? Okay, seeing none, just a few announcements to make. The United Way of Arustic will hold a black tie gala on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, at five thirty at the Sergeant Family Community Center. We have the following vacancies for boards, committees, zoning board, and planning board. You can see the city clerk for an application, or you can apply online. And lastly, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Prescott City Council will be on Wednesday, February first, twenty twenty-three, at six P M at the Sergeant Family Community Center. If you do plan on attending that, you check me back, because at some point, we'll be moving into city hall again. We hope anything is there for the future. So just keep your eye on that, and we'll make any announcements on the city website if that location does change. Anything else from any councilors? All right, then I would entertain a motion to end the public session and move into executive session pursuant to one M R S A four or five sixty to discuss negotiations. Moved by Jeff? Second?
Second.
Seconded by Kevin. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven zero.